Bienvenue, nouveau épisode de Skylar Learns French. Je m'appelle Skylar. Did I say that already? Et c'est mon programme. Skylar Learns French, yes he does. In lieu of an intro, I'm trying to make up a theme song. So how do you like that one? Is that a good one? Um, let's turn this piano up in case I need it. Um, yeah. Um, it's a little melancholy, to be honest. It's a little like, you know, Skylar learns French, yes he does. It's like too sad. I gotta come up. It should really be like, Skylar learns French, yes he does. You know, like something actually exciting. Or like, yes he does. You know, add that reverb in there. Okay. Anyway, hello everybody! Welcome to the show! Um, yesterday, if you missed it, I don't blame you. It's okay. It was an American holiday. Um, quite a, quite a big one for most of the country normally. Wasn't feeling very patriotic this year all that much, but that's okay. Um, and guess what? I'm on a 30-day challenge, so I have to be here. Um, so I forgive you for missing. Not a problem. Um, we introduced a news segment which was called Corrections, Show Corrections. So I'm gonna start off each show with corrections that people drop into the comments from the show before. Um, that's not gonna happen this time because no one watched last week, or yesterday. Um, but it's okay. Um, we do have one that we'll start with. Um, and let me jump over to it. So, um, nu- uh, nunia, nuniaf, nu-nia-fa. I don't know what that means. Is that a name? Uh, maybe it's a bad word. I don't know. Nuniafa said, "Happy Fourth," and, um, "Prenez soin de vous et lavez-vous les mains." Uh, which I love this. So, they said, he, she, it, they said. Prenez soin de vous is prenne, take, soin, care, uh, de vous, of yourself. Uh, and, uh, lavez-vous les mains is, uh, lavez-vous is wash, uh, les mains, your hands. So thanks so much, uh, nuniafa, uh, uh, for the well wishes and reminding people to wash your hands and stay clean.
Nuniafa.
Oh, oh gosh, chill. Gee, no, chill. Okay. Um, let's see. No, it's not what I wanted. I wanted this guy. Okay, back to me. So today, we are, uh, seven, day seven of the challenge. Um, I was hoping to be through chapter one of this book that we're working on. I'm feeling like I'm not quite there. I really wanna nail this stuff down. So, um, today will be, I think, we'll see how far we get, and then maybe tomorrow's the last day in chapter one. Um, and then, we're on to chapter two, just flying through stuff. Learning, apprendre, p- pondrin. We're appondrin all day. Okay, let's get into, uh, the actual flashcards, uh, for the show. Uh, da-da-da-na, chapter one, la cuisine. Um, no, we don't wanna start there. We wanna start at the beginning. Why is it doing that? Don't cheat, don't look. Okay, here we go. I'm gonna just rip through these. Prove that I know them, transferring them to long-term memory. Um, if I miss one that I missed yesterday, I'm gonna star it, and, um, you can make fun of me. Okay. À la maison, at home. Yes, let's go faster. Accrocher, to hang. Aller dans, go in. Une assiette, a dish, a plate. Aussi, also. Avec, with. Un bateau, a boat. Blanc, blanche, white. Bois, wooden. Un breuvage, a beverage. La catacuche, rubber. Ceci, ce, this. Une chaise, a chair. Une chat. Une chat, un chat. This is a cat. Une chien, une chien. This is a dog. I got a dog! Hold up, timeout. I got a dog! Yay! Got him yesterday, and he's adorable. His name is Rugy, for rugaroo. Um, he's, he's a Louisiana Catta Hula. That's our state dog. I'm so excited. Okay, huh, back to it. Um, le coin, corner. Comfortable, comfortable. Agréable, agreeable. Creer, to run. Une cuillère, une cuillère, a spoon. La cuisine, kitchen. Dans, in. De, of. Le autre cô- de l'autre côté, à travers de, this is around the corner, l'autre côté. Derrière ou en arrière, en
Derrière, en arrière.
En arrière, en arrière. Uh, this is behind. Lo, et, I'm just reading the words now. Um, that's how you know you know it. You don't even, there's no translation there. Uh, et, and. Être, to be. Lévier, uh, the washer, sink? Sorry, sink, 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 sink. Uh, la fenêtre, I am not starring it. I will not star it. La fenêtre, uh, window. Uh, un fleu, a flower. Uh, no, I said, un fleu, un fleu, not une. Un, un fleu, fleu. Uh, les fours, a stove, or an oven. I think it's more of an oven, maybe? Um, not really sure there, but the stove is what I have in my book. Okay, une fourchette, is a fork. Le gaz, is a gas. Le groupen, a toaster. Gris, gr- uh, gray. Gros, grande, this is large. Il y a, there is, a, there are. Il, elle, ce, ce, cet, cet, il, elle. This is he, she, it. Image, image. Jardin.
Jardin.
Jardin, jardin, jardin. This is a garden. Jean, this is yellow. Joli, joli, beau, belle. This is pretty. Uh, we're beautiful. La vise, uh, this is a washer. Lumière, lights, uh, or light. L'ustre chantier, this is a chandelier. Machine à café, caf- coffee maker, coffee maker. Mélaxeur, this is a blender. Mélangeur, this is a mixer. Merci. Dossier, right? Metal. Uh, it says it like this. Metal. Um, is that really how you do it? I don't know. Metal. I'm really exaggerating. Metal. I just, I hear it in my head every time I see this word now. Uh, me, this is a wall. Nap, this is a tablecloth. Non, il n'y a pas. Nope, there aren't any. There are none, there are none there. Non, il n'y a pas. Nous is us, we, us. Nouveau, nouvel, neuve, neuve, this is new. Où is our. Où is where. Uh, da-da-da, oui, yes. Petit, petite, this is small. Uh, pétenier, this is trample. Let's hear it.
Pietiné.
Pietiné, pitiné, pitiné. Cool. Let's make sure you guys can still see me. My screen went off. Meh, don't know why. Placard, cupboard, garde-robe, this is a wardrobe. Bibliothèque, a bookshelf. Plafond, the ceiling. Poignée, is a handle. I got a handle on that term. Poisson, this is a fish. Port, door. Poulet, chicken. Pour, for. Près, proche, near. Prop, clean. Prudent, careful. Que, 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 damn it. Que, quoi, quel, what, what? Refrigerateur, frigo. Ronde, ronde. Uh, da-da-da, rouge, red. Sal, dirty. Sècheur, dryer. Serviette, this is a napkin towel. Uh, da-da-da, spacieux, spacious. This is spacious. Sur, en. Uh, sur le droit, on the right. Sur la gauche, on the left. Sur le dessus, this is above, on top of. Tasse, cup. Ténère, to stand, to hold. Te, te, tea. Uh, terrier, eh, terrier, terrier, is a teapot. I'm a little terrier. Uh, toit, roof, roof. Uh, vassie, assiettes, les, uh, these are dishes. Vert, glass. Uh, glace et fer. Vert, fer, un vert. Uh, da-da-da-da, vert, vert, this is green. Vestibule, entrée, entrée, this is a hallway. Hall, vestibule, hall. Um, viel, vieux, viel, vel, vieux, dang it.
Vieux, vieux, vilil.
Vilil? Have I been saying that wrong this whole time? Viel?
Vieux, vieux, vilil.
Vie, vieux, vil. Alright, I'll star it. I think I've been saying it wrong this whole time. Ville, city. Voler, to steal. Vouloir, to, uh, want. And une bouli-
Une bouloir.
Bouloir, une bouloir. I added this one from last time, cuz it wasn't in there and it tripped me up from the book. So this is a kettle, une bouloir. And it's fun to say, une bouloir, bouloir. Um, uh, okay, cool. So that was fun. Oh, oh gosh, wrong spot. That's not what we wanna look at. Um, no, this is not what we wanna look at either. Wait, hold on. Were you guys, did you see, was I showing this the whole time? Or were you just watching my head again? Ah, man. I gotta get better at this. This is like, there's gotta be a way to like keep this screen in the bottom so you can kinda see what I'm doing or something. I don't know. Oh, I know. I can make this a little bit smaller. Okay, cool. Anyway, learning on the go is fun in front of everyone, making fool of yourself is cool. Okay. Um, let's go to the reading portion, which involves, uh, my, uh, mon livre, mon book. Okay, mon, mon book, my book, my book. Okay, let's do it. So here's what's gonna happen. Um, I have done several day, oh, I gotta move my microphone. Hold on. Uh, it's really on here today. Okay, here we go. Thanks for the words of encouragement, guys. Really appreciate it. Um, I have this, I had this idea to do the show where, uh, I didn't know anything and I was, you know, learning French with no teacher, and Sam, in my band, laughed at me. He was like, "I don't think I've ever seen anybody do that before." And I said, "Maybe there's a reason why." Okay, um, so I've been going through, uh, this book and we've been doing the side-by-side translations. So today, rather than, uh, rather than read the translations and stop in English, today, I just want to read it all the way through and, um, get my brain to actually just, uh, da-da, just to like, catch it, like, no translation filter. Just like, when I say ceci est une ville, I don't wanna go ceci, okay, this, et, okay, et, une ville, ah, city, right, okay. Um, I wanna just like know, ceci est une ville, and be like, my brain's like, I know exactly what you're saying. Okay. So, here we go. Uh, da-da-da-da, ceci, uh, ceci est une ville. Elle est grande et belle. Elle est située près de la mer. Ceci est, est une rue. Elle est dans la ville. La ville est large et propre. Ceci est une maison. La maison est dans la rue. Elle est propre et belle. Les murs sont blancs. La plafond est rouge. La porte est nouvelle. Elle est en bois. Okay, feeling good about that. Uh, let's see, can you guys see this top? Yeah, okay, cool. Ceci est un jardin, jardin. Forgot that from earlier. Ceci est un jardin. Le jardin est situé près de la maison. Elle est grande et verte. Le chien court près de la poule dans le jardin. Stop it, chien. Uh, le pétine les f- les fleurs. Ils pétinent les fleurs. I think I'm messing that up. Ils pétinent les fleurs. Uh, this is a really annoying dog, messing everything up. Nous allons dans la maison. Ceci est une, est une vestibule. Le vestibule est spacieux et confortable. La cuisine est sur le droit. La cuisine est large et luminose. Les murs sont jaunes. Le plafond est blanc. Okay, I'm doing okay. Il y a lustres au plus fond. Okay, let's do that again, take two. Il y a une lustre au plus fond. Il est gros, gros et beau. Ceci est une table. Elle est grande et ronde, ronde. Il y a un nap sur la table. Uh, da-da-da, ceci est une mélangeur. Il est sur la table. Elle est agréable et petit. Ceci est un verre. Elle est aussi sur la table. Elle est faite de verre. La verre est propre. Cool. Uh, près, we doing good here? Okay. Uh, près de la table, il y a une chaise, chaise. Okay, it's pretty, pretty close. It felt, it flowed out okay. Elle est en bois. La ch- la chaise est confortable. Ceci est un refri- refrigerator. Ceci est un refrigerator. Est une refrigerator. Ça s'appelle une frigo! Elle, uh, il, il est gris. Le refrigerator est nouveau. Il est situé dans le coin. Il y a un chat près de la frigo. Uh, il veut, il veut voler le poisson du refrigerator. Naughty. Get out of there. You little shit. Uh, ceci est un groupen. Elle est place sur le refrigerator. Le groupen est petit et pratique. Ceci est une machine à café. Elle est place, uh, elle est placée près de la vier, la vier. Elle est placée près de la vier. La machine à café est sale. Hmm, c'est triste. Uh, da-da-da-da, ceci est un mixeur. Il est aussi sur le ré- refrigerator. Il est aussi sur le refrigerator. Il est blanc. Le mixeur est vieux, vieux. Le mixeur est vieux. Il y a un fenêtre de l'autre côté de l'refrigerateur. Elle est grande et propre. Ceci est une feu. Oven or stove? What's, what's the, what's the verdict here? Stove, right? It's an oven. I'm not sure. Uh, da-da-da, ceci est un feu. Il est situé près de la fenêtre. Il est prac- uh, nouveau et pratique. Cool. Uh, il est nouveau et pratique. Da-da-da-da, you guys can see, oh my god, look how dirty my nails are. That's embarrassing. Why would I do that? Ugh, I feel gross now. Don't pay attention! Don't look at me! You can stop watching now. Okay, um, now I'm gonna be distracted the rest of the time. Ugh, ceci est une bouli- bouloir, uh, bouloir. Ceci est un bouloir. Uh, da-da-da-da, you were just thinking that? Somebody just said they were just thinking that. Ugh! I'm gonna have a complex for the rest of my life now. Uh, da-da-na-na, elle est sur le feu au gaz. Uh, da-da, elle est en métal avec, uh, avec un poignée de catacôques. Près du refrigerator, il y a une lav- vassie. À la gauche, il y a une séchoire pour la vassie. Ceci est un placard. Uh, il est accroché au dessus de la vier. Il est en bois. Ceci est, ceci est une scivourette, scivourette. Servet, serviette. Ugh, ceci est une serviette. Il est dans le placard de la cuisine. Elle est petite et propre. Ceci est une marge, ceci est une marge. Uh, I bet if you're going really, really fast, that's what it sounds like. It's like, ceci est une marge. Ceci est une marge. Uh, da-da, elle est sur la mer, sur le mur, sorry. Désolé, pardon. Elle est sur le mur. Il y a, il y a la mer, uh, et un bateau dans la table. Ceci est la table de cuisine. Elle est située dans le coin. Elle est large et en bois. Okay, a couple more sentences and we'll be done with this section. Uh, yeah, we're doing good for time here, rolling through. Um, comprehending, I think. Uh, je pense, je pense ça. Je pense que je, j'ai, je suis smart. Okay. Uh, da-da-na-na-na-na. Ceci, ceci est une fourchette. Elle est sur la table. La fourchette est en métal. Elle est propre. Ceci est, est une assiette. Elle est sur, sur la table de la cuisine. Elle est sur la table de la cuisine. La sieste est jaune. Elle est petite et belle. Ceci est, ceci est, est une tasse. Ceci est une tasse. Elle est aussi sur la table de la cuisine. La tasse est rouge. Un chat boit de l'eau dans la tasse. Uh, da-da-da, last sentence. Uh, Ceci est une cuillère à thé. Elle est située dans la tasse. La cuillère est en métal et, uh, elle est petite. Okay, how'd I do? Ugh, that was, that was, um, you know, that was rough, but I think it gets a I'll end it on a minor chord, just to, you know, like, see it wasn't quite there. Okay, um, cool. Well, the next section is questions for this guy, but I think we're gonna save it. I don't think we're quite out of this chapter. Um, part of my approach here is, um, I'm kinda going for like, heavy inputs, just lots of just hearing, listening, seeing the words, making the sounds with my mouth, maybe not catching the meanings all the time, but just immersion, getting it all into my head. Um, so that's the plan. Um, and you know, I was thinking about this show today, and I, this thought popped into my head. And I was like a little down about progress or trying to be motivated. And, um, I just thought, I wanna be the very best. Just wanna be the very best French speaker. Yeah, I was trying to like hone down what my goal is, right? I was like, I just wanna be the best. Um, which reminded me of the classic theme song to the original, uh, 90's Pokemon show, which starts off with, "I wanna be the very best." Um, and then I did a dumb thing where I translated the whole theme song. And I think we should go through that together, if y'all are down. So, check this out. I actually really love this because, um, there's lots of future tense stuff in here, and I, I don't know future tense at all, really. Um, so this is probably like out of order and like pushing bounds and whatever, but I don't know. It's fun for me, and that's the important thing about learning. Gotta keep it fun. Um, so, uh, here's what this comes out to. This is the French version of the show. I was just wondering like how this happens, and I looked it up. So then I was like, well, I don't know what they're saying. Let me translate it. This is what I got. Uh, un jour de sera serait la meilleure d- très sûre. One day I wanna be the best trainer. Je me battrai sans répit. I will fight tirelessly, tireless, tirelessly, tirelessly, Tylerlessly, Skylarlessly. Je me battrai sans répit. Like without, without stopping, without pause. Reprit, right? Is that what that means? Okay. Je ferai tout pour être vainqueur. I will do everything to be victorious. That's, these are such, such great lyrics. Je ferai tout pour être vainqueur, vainqueur. Et gagner les défis, défis. And win the challenges! Et gagner les défis. I love this. Uh, je parcourrai la terre entière. I will travel the whole earth. Je parcourrai, parcourrai, je parcourrai la terre. I love it. Uh, traîner avec l'espoir. Tracking down with hope. This is like hunting. Hunting with hope. Traîner avec espoir. Track, hunting with hope. Hunting with hope sounds like a really bad Martha Stewart show. Like, like, welcome to Hunting with Hope. Um, les, les Pokémons et le, le mystérieux. Pokemon and their mysteries. I like this leur, cuz I don't use that enough, their. Um, les sic- les secrets, secret, les secrets, les secrets, les secrets de leur pouvoir. The secrets of their power. Pokemon. Attraper les tous. Catch them all. Attraper les tous. I love it. It's so funny. C'est notre histoire, c'est notre histori- histoire, histoire? C'est notre histoire? Or, uh, we'll figure out if that's, how to say that. It's our history, it's our story. This is our story. Ensemble, ensemble, pour la victoire, victorie, victo- wa, victoire? Uh, I don't, I get confused on that. I have to figure that out. But together, for victory. Ensemble pour victoire, pour la victoire. Rien ne nous arrêtera. Nothing will stop us. That's such a good statement. This is great motivational stuff here. Uh, notre am- uh, amitié? Uh, oh, I forgot, I could do this right now.
Amitié.
Amitié. Notre amitié. Uh, which, our friendship, right? Our friendship will triumph.
Triomphera.
Triomphera. This is so hilarious to me. Triomphera. So lots of future tense though, that's cool. Triomphera. Our, our friendship will triumph. Uh, Pokemon attrapez les tous. Même à notre âge. The literal translation here is like, even at our age, which doesn't really sound right for a kid's show. It's probably like, no matter what our age is. Même à notre âge. Um, une voyage, how do you say this?
Apprentissage.
Apprentice, ap-
Apprentissage.
Apprentissage, apprentissage, d'apprentissage. Um, une voyage d'apprentissage. Skylar Learns French et une voyage de penchossage. It's, it's right here, guys. It's a learning journey. Ça demande du courage. And it takes courage, Pokemon. Attrapez-vous, attrapez-les-vous, uh, attrapez-les-tous. Gotta catch them all. I love it. Um, okay, so I think we're just gonna finish this off by listening to that, cuz it's fun. I hope you guys have enjoyed this episode of Skylar Learns French. Oh, here we go.
Un jour, je serai le meilleur bresser.
Okay, sorry, this is already amazing. Okay. Un jour, je serai le meilleur d'ailleurs. This was like, "I wanna be the very best."
Un jour, je serai le meilleur bresser. Je me battrai sans répit.
Hmm.
Je ferai tout pour être vainqueur.
Je ferai tout pour être vainqueur. Oh, that's so-
Et gagner les défis.
Et gagner les défis. It's so good! Dude, okay, this is the best part though. Je parcourrai, it's like the most like rhythmic, like rock. Je parcourrai, it's, that is so hardcore. I love it. Je parcourrai la terre, terre entière. Let's get, let's back it up a little bit. Quel soir? Hunting with hope.
Les Pokémon sont les mystères, se perd la foi. Pokemon attrapez, c'est notre-
Attrapez-les-tous!
C'est leur mystère, c'est leur foi.
Le cercle de la- Le cercle de la poire. Ooh, I don't know how to say that. Oh, that's so good, wait. Un voyage de fou- What is it? Un, de, d'apprentissage. Un voyage d'apprentissage. Un voyage d'apprentissage. This is the, "I teach you, you teach me, and I'll teach you." That's the original bit. Uh, ça, ça demande du courage. Attraper les tous. Okay, well, that was dumb. Um, that was really fun, and my camera went off, of course, in the middle of that, because, you know, these are just the things that we deal with in the world. Oh, change battery pack. This happened last time! Okay, well, I hope you had fun on this thirty-minute episode of Skylar Learns French, where everything goes wrong, and I make fun, I make a fool of myself. Goodbye, à bientôt. See you next time.